Good evening, I'm calling this to meet the regular meeting of South Lebanon City Council to order, June 5th, 2025 at 6 o'clock PM.
Allen.
Present.
Carmack.
Present.
Holmes.
Present.
Fetter.
Present.
Harrison. Spicer.
Present.
Would you all please rise for the prayer and the pledge?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and the blessings you have bestowed on South Lebanon and our citizens. Help us to strengthen our community and let us work together for the good of our community. Let the work we do here be acceptable in your sight. Let us be honest, transparent, and kind in all we do, representing the city. Even in disagreement, let us respect and work through these situations with each other. Let us use the tax dollars wisely that our citizens have paid and improve our infrastructure and quality of life. We give thanks for all of our staff as they work to improve our community. Protect our first responders, keep them safe as they go about their missions, bless their families and give them peace. We ask for your protection of our nation, in your holy name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and thank you all for coming this evening. We have some guests this evening. Sam, are you ready? Sam? Or Tim, whichever one would like to come up? Just state your name and...
Tim Greivie with Thomas Graham Associates here, representing the River Creek Lost Development. And just wanted to give you a little bit of an update. I don't know if we have some of the photos here. I know they got in here kind of late, but... I don't know if you've driven by, but the road widening...
All the time!
Road widening work is progressing and nearly complete. And that is Building 2, which is... Or is that Building? No, Building 2. Building 1 has brick on it already. So you can see Building 2's got the windows and all the way up to the fourth floor. And Building 1 has brick along all four sides. Clubhouse is all the brick. And we had a little issue with some of the weather the last couple of weeks with the rain. But we're looking forward to paving hopefully next week. Getting the parking lot and the roundabout and the main driveway coming in paved. We've gotten all the infrastructure as far as the underground utilities are all in, water, sewer, storm is all in, electrics in, transformers. So we're proceeding along pretty well here. We're getting a lot accomplished, even with some of the weather we've accomplished, had to deal with, but... It's looking good, looking like a real sight now. So yeah, we just wanted to give you an update on where we're at and what's going on. We're still pushing on trying to get the clubhouse open here, you know, maybe late this summer. And then Building 1 probably trying to get that by the end of the year. I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, Sam?
Sam Etchery, 1942 Aldacourt, Dayton, 4549. So thank you all. So within eight months, we didn't lot with all the weather changing. Pretty much doing well ahead of the game, four months ahead of the game. So planned to finish by November or December to open Building 1 and Building 2. The club was planned to open by September, so had two months to market, digital market. So it's so good. And the road widening is done, pretty much the hood on property driveway is done. It's not completely done, so the base course has been done. So all...
The water and sewer has already been extended across the road for Udon. They've got two water services and two sanitary super paths brought over their property. So they've got that to work with and this surface course, I think, what's the schedule on that same?
So next two weeks.
Two weeks.
June... Last week, June 40.
When do you think Masonmore Mill Grove improvements will be completed?
Oh, within the next two weeks.
Same, same?
Yeah, same time, next three weeks.
Yeah, the same time.
Alright. There's some issues with the gas relocation?
We've done that.
Alright.
We fixed the issue.
Great.
We moved the gas line and moved the guardrail, so...
And things weren't quite exactly where they were supposed to be. That never happened, right?
No, never.
We found some of that stuff and had to take care of it and get it moved, so...
And we plan to build entrance wall next June 4th week after grading, fine grading is done, then come back for sign design. The entrance wall sign and building sign, the club board sign too. We'll come with a plan next couple of weeks, yeah. So moving good, so far so good, and all the curves are done. We plan to, we plan to ask for the June 3rd week. Weather is getting delayed because good day today is February to home. The hard job is Masonmore Mill Grove, so much, so much, so many water line, gas lane, cables, stuff, winding road, yeah. Gas light.
We understand that.
So... Building 2 getting ready for the... By the way, all inspections passed by Warren County for Building 1, excellent fire sprinkler. I'm working with Mr. Rob Nappio to test and everything, yeah.
And drywall is...
Ready for installation by next week, and drywall.
That's exciting!
Yeah.
It is.
That's the clubhouse, yeah. Like the brick, yeah. It's kind of contemporary brick, gray, white, and... And there's between the two columns won't be lead stone, like a stacking stone, yeah.
Is that middle area that you see there is exposed all the way up two stories, so you walk in the front door and see six?
Any other questions? I have to answer. I promise, yes. We're going to build this project, yeah.
Yes, we're moving forward.
Yeah.
It's an exciting time and we look forward to September.
Yes.
Yeah, we had very good weather, you know, September, October, November.
Right.
So we've been able to accomplish a lot of earthwork and things like that. We had a little bit of issue in this building, that, you know, Building 1 and 2 were really under roof, so a lot could be done in them, even though we had some rain.
I think SiteWorks was one of your main contractor, Earth Moving? So the local contractors doing the work, which is great.
Yeah, they did the work for Masonmore Mill Grove Road and for...
The whole site, yeah.
Work up at the treatment plant for the horse mane, so that's going to all be ready for the connection whenever that project goes forward, yes. Any news on that?
In progress, yes.
So we left the white, white, white connection, yeah.
Yes, when you're ready.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes!
It was really nice after done, everything done.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
It's good asset for the city, long run. Lot of dollars come and go, but we want to build this project.
When was this originally started?
September 12th.
I meant when we originally started looking at that property?
2020.
Yeah, so that was kind of a few years.
And then COVID happened.
Yes, COVID happened, interest has went up.
Yes. Little hitch in the giddy up there.
All the electrical conduit ready to go for transfer, so... This couple of weeks, the transfer pads, pads are ready. So they're going to install the Duke, it's going to come do all the transformers. And the other light pole base also done.
Thank you so much for coming and giving us the update.
There's light pole bases at main entrance, yeah. So this is main entrance. This is what, wall is going to be.
That will be very pretty.
So what's your plans for the mansion in the back?
Maintenance back?
The big house in the back.
The house, it's in the back.
I'm sorry.
What's your plans for that?
We're going to keep it.
I knew you said you were going to keep it. That'd be a great place for convention.
Not forever! Yeah.
Eventually, eventually we will, we will go, we're going to keep it through the next phase anyway.
Yeah.
It's served a good purpose for construction office and meeting office and... Been a good building for us, but eventually we got a building that's going to be sitting here.
Well, we look forward to the finished project and stuff.
Happy to walk through when you get time from next week.
What is not as muddy?
Muddy, yeah.
We get that payment now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then you can see how we built Sam inside, quality of the product, yeah. We never had any issue with this county, everything pass, pass, pass.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Miss E. Thank you, Miss E. May I see again?
Good to see you. And now? Kevin Payton from Joshua's Place.
Good evening, thanks for having me. I'll let you guys pass those packets around. Jerry's also going to have those for on screen, but I wanted you to have one in hand in case you had any questions later that you had for me. My name's Kevin Payton. I live at 120 Vista Ridge Drive here in South Lebanon. I am here in my capacity as the Executive Director of Joshua's Place and also the Senior Pastor of Village Church. And wanted to give you some updates, some of the stuff you've seen already before when I was back here back in the fall. There's an ordinance front of you about the lease renewal for the community center. That is, we have another year left on that lease, but for reasons that I'll share as part of today. Now's a good time for us to be getting it renewed because of some plans that are underway already and some things I'd like to share with you about what our plans were. So would love to answer any questions you've got either today or moving forward, because we'd appreciate your support in getting this lease done. So first I want to give you a little bit of context. It's frequent that we'll talk to people that drive by the community center, the former elementary school. There's always cars there, there's always something going on, but it's not always clear what's happening. Because there are several groups, organizations that are part of the community center, three of which I oversee. Joshua's Place, Celebrate Recovery, and of course the Village Church. And of course you know the King's Food Pantry also has permanent space there along with different things that go on. And so especially for the parts that I lead, I wanted to give you a little bit of a context, backdrop, a little bit of brief history. I won't be long. But I think it's important for you to understand just the amount of work that happens just on a day-to-day basis. So first of all, Joshua's Place, our mission at Joshua's Place, you guys probably know, we started here in South Lebanon in 2008, so we're in our 18th year. Moved over here to the elementary school in 2011, 2012. Joshua's Place, originally just 10 volunteers serving 15 families. Today, we've grown to we're in five school districts around Warren County. We're somewhere north of 400 volunteers, 30 or more churches are involved with it. And I think I shared with you in the past, a lot of what we do in terms of serving families that are struggling with poverty are now become best practices for other faith-based organizations around the country where I get an opportunity to share about what started here, what's being done here. And then to help other folks doing the same kind of things we do all over the country. And so Joshua's Place is an important part of this story. Celebrate Recovery started about a year after Joshua's Place, and Celebrate Recovery is a national ministry that focuses on folks with their hurts, habits, and hangups, on addictions, codependency, grief, any type of emotional, mental health, or spiritual struggle. We walk alongside families that do that. So we've been doing that now for 16 or 17 years. And a lot of what you see in the activity there is of course focused on adults, but also you're going to see we've got a lot of programming for teens and for kids right now around those issues also. And then really, kind of born out of those two things, Joshua's Place and Celebrate Recovery, is when we started Village Church in 2012. So we're now in our 13th year of being here in South Lebanon. And it's a church like any church, maybe some of you go to. Probably 250 or so people call our church home, depending on which Sunday and if the Bengals are playing or not. And our mission is to love God, love others, make disciples, and we've got a vision to be a place of refuge, inviting people to find the purpose, peace and joy that God has for them. And so we are the kind of the glue that holds that together. And all three of those organizations, I have leadership and responsibility for both here in South Lebanon and of course Joshua's Place and the other areas we're at. In fact, Donna was planning on being my wife. Donna was going to be here tonight. She's leading one of our reading programs in Mainville tonight, so she couldn't make it. She sends her regards. Of course, you guys know King's Food Pantry's been in the community for a long time. They have two classrooms in the community center that they lease from us, kind of an informal agreement. They pay us $600 a month to be there. And they are open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday and do typical kind of food pantry services for the community. Along with those four organizations that are there just all the time every week. You're going to see things like key life events, folks that live here in South Lebanon that have a baby shower, a birthday party. Hey, I need some space to do these kind of things. They're using the community center. We've got homeowners associations and other organizations that are using the facility for their meetings. Of course, you guys know we're a polling location for several precincts here in the community. Sometimes the city will use it. We've got veterans events or other large gatherings going on. And then organizations like the AARP, they have a space throughout tax season where they do tax services for the seniors here in the community for free. And so we give them a space. Along with the summer, we get teachers that will meet with folks, they're counseling and just kind of active use all the time. The notable thing, I think, about a lot of those is with the exception of the King's Food Pantry, nobody pays. Everything that we do is available to all of those organizations for no cost. And while we certainly appreciate the $600 a month we get from King's Food Pantry, it's still a net loss for us in terms of just we've got three or four pretty big size commercial refrigeration and freezer units. We pay for all the upkeep, all the maintenance, all the custodial services in the building. And so while we do receive revenue from them, it's the, all of the organizations we consider to be, and we want to continue to offer as gifts. It's our hope and desire, that's always the case. So that's who's using it now. Today, my goal is, again, I know I was here back in the fall, so this will be a little bit redundant, but some new information. I'm going to talk a little bit about the impact and the investment, both historically, what we're doing now and what the plans are in the future. Want to share with you a little bit about the activity, just to kind of give you a taste of what's going on even right now. And then about the future vision, what we're seeing and the reason we're here today, what is really a year early asking for this renewal versus waiting until maybe next year sometime. So in your packet there, the cover sheet, and I won't go through the details of it, but it's the same thing you saw last fall when I was here. This is the historical investments that we've made in the community sensor, community center since we took over in 2012. And it's everything from replacing new HVAC units to replacing doors, to flooring, to you name it, the favorite. The easiest thing I've ever raised money for was to get rid of the bats. People loved to give money to that fundraiser.
I love the bat story.
Yeah, well, there's lots of bat stories, including me preaching one Sunday when one hung behind me. It's always tough to keep people's attention generally, but especially when there's a bat hanging behind you the whole time that's happening. And so this is just a total in $402,000 that just through the end of 2004 that we put into the building since we've been there, the past, well, going on 14 years now. So we've already invested about a little over $400,000. If you look at that next page, it gets you a little bit more in terms of the kind of the regular operating expense and the regular impact on the left-hand column. I've updated these since the last time to reflect 2024 numbers. And so you're going to see between things like electric, water, waste removal, repairs and maintenance, you subtract the $7,200 a year that we get from the King's Food Pantry. Last year, we spent $43,227 just on that facility. So this isn't including other facilities that we have around the community with Joshua's Place. This is just here at the community center. In terms of ongoing expense, again, just focusing on this site, not the other four sites outside of South Lebanon. About $62,000 with the programming. So that's food and groceries, that's weekend food programs, that's crafts for our library, for the summer camp, those kind of things, about $62,000. And then Celebrate Recovery, in terms of curriculum, staff, all the food, we do free dinners as part of that ministry, the $35,000. So on an annual basis, and this has been pretty typical for us over the past several years, is spending about $139,000 on an ongoing basis. So that's just money we'll continue to spend that's budgeted and already paid for, really out of two sources, out of the Joshua's Place budget or out of the church budget. So that's kind of the two. The right-hand column there speaks a little bit more about impact, and I'm expressing impact here in terms of people, which is a little hard to gauge. But I think it's still measurable on a monthly level. And so you just see a list there of just some of the programs we do, the Food Cooperative, Weekend Food Pack, the Wiz Kids Tutoring Program, our summer reading programs, our summer camps, some of the occasional things we do like for Thanksgiving and back to school. About 1,300 people a month are served by the things that are happening there through Joshua's Place. If you go down Celebrate Recovery in terms of what we see on a regular basis, folks that are both children, teens, and adults that are part of that, about another 570 folks that are served each month as part of that ministry. And so we estimate close to 1,900 people a month. I think those are pretty conservative estimates. That's just things that are happening right now, current, ongoing things we're doing. So that's the impact and investment in terms of where it's at now. To give you a little bit of a sampling of the activity, I just had someone from our staff pull up this week's schedule. So that next page is just a sampling by day. We've actually got a little bit of a lighter Friday and Saturday of the kinds of things that are in the building that have already happened this week or will happen. So it's our summer camp, our summer reading, our library programs, groups that are meeting at night, step studies for our recovery ministry, the free dinners we do, the free breakfast we're doing that we do on Saturdays and on Sundays. All those kinds of things, even the church, when the church uses it on Sunday. And so this is fairly typical of our summer months. Of course, when school's on, we're doing things like packing the food for all the districts. We've got the after-school tutorings on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And so, but this is just a, just kind of a snapshot of what's happening now. And then this next two pages are just for your personal reference. This is our summer camp we've got going on right now. These are the kind of things that'll be happening through June and July. And so Mondays and Wednesdays, which of course we're doing free lunch for the kids in the community here every time we open the doors. And then there's always things, there's like Robot Wars, there's computer programming classes. If you're interested, the penguins are coming from the Newport Aquarium on June 16th. You don't want to miss that one. That's always a popular one. And so it gives you an idea of the kinds of things that go on throughout the summer as part of our summer camp. And so what we hope to do is to continue those kinds of things. Obviously, keeping the building's a big part of that, having the facility, making sure we continue to invest in it and expand. And so the third thing that I wanted to share with you is really about the future vision, what it is we're trying to do. The biggest piece of that in terms of today, about why, what's the timeline, is around the federal grant that... When did we start, Jerry, working on this? Has it been five years, four years ago we started? It's been four or five years and Jerry and his staff did a great job of finding this grant through Congressman Landsman's office and identifying things that could be fixed. And so the federal grant is about really three big things at the community center, replacing the parking lot, replacing the roof, and replacing the windows. At that time, we had estimated it to be about $1.2 million. That's been four or five years. Our best guess is it's probably going to be higher than that today. And we're at the point to where we're about to get started, and it's not a day too soon. The roof is literally, I don't mean to exaggerate, falling in on us right now. We've got several major leaks and it's just not worth it to go and make yet another repair when we know this is coming. It's ruined some flooring and things that are going on, but we need to get it going. And so Jerry and I are working together on trying to expedite that. But a big part of that is because we also need to then put our part of the investment into it. And so in order to do that, we wanted to make sure that we've got this lease in place and that we've got an understanding. Because this is all money that I have to raise. I've got to go to donors and supporters and say, hey, we need, you know, X amount of dollars to do these kinds of things. So the federal grant is a big piece of what the future is going to be about. We're excited about it. Really, I joked with our congregation on Sunday, if we wait much longer, we can hold baptisms in the parking lot, just in the pod holes. But we think we're close, so we're excited about that happening. The other two big things, and this is what Jerry's showing you on the screen right now, was last year about this time, we reached out to an architecture firm to work with us on what kinds of things could we do to this building, which was built, and of course many of you know the history, built in two phases, that keeps with the current look of what the building does, that adds some addition in terms of the aesthetics of the space, but also some functionality. And so after lots of iterations, what you see there is our first desire, which is to do an addition on the front of the building. There's really no lobby. You walk, I mean, of course, what is the front door now, of course, you guys know, was the hallway that connected the buildings. And so we'd like to build that. We think it's going to give it a lot of nice look and aesthetics to, from the curb appeal. But if you go to that next slide there, Jerry, it also, that's from the side view there. And then on the inside, it would give us kind of a nice welcoming space to, as people come in, to kind of get their bearings instead of just sending them right down the hallway. And so it's going to provide a functional use, but I think will really update the building quite a bit. While at the same time keeping it within the look, there just isn't, you've got to be careful to not do things that don't look like they fit. And so that was a big deal for us. And so adding the front addition is something we're hoping to do. We'd like to do something, we can raise the money, get the lease renewed. The second thing is what we're calling a community auditorium. And, you know, this is what was, what is now, the gymnasium, and we use it both ways now, is that it's our desire to kind of reorient it. Right now, if you walk into that space, if there's a large meeting, you walk into the front of it. So the idea would be to shift it to where you would actually enter from the back. Some of these improvements we've already made, we've already added HVAC, we've already done ceiling, we've already done a lot of that. But to do some things for the aesthetics and then reorientation, and then actually tie into what was the old locker rooms, open those back up. And that would create a little bit of a kind of a backstage or kind of a green room type space. And so if we've got any kind of community theater productions or any, of course, large events, it'll... it'll seat up to 300 people. And so that would be available, like everything we've got here for the community to use those kinds of things. And so creating this space is a, is a real big priority for us. And so when we think about all those things, it costs money. Like if we do everything, and there's a couple of other things in terms of space, if we, if we had it, that we could add, we could add on to this. But we're looking at easily $700,000 to a million dollars on top of the 1.2 million that's been talked about from the federal grant. And so, you know, net, and that's of course the floor plan that would take all this into account. So we're talking the possibility of, of, of spending another, you know, $2 million into this facility, which I think is going to be money well spent. Some of that, we've got about a million dollars in grants and participation from you guys and from the feds. But then I got to go raise the money now. I, I got to go find supporters for that. I'm confident we can. We have a passionate and committed group of congregants at our church that are bought into the mission of who we are and why we're in this community, doing what we do. And at Joshua's Place, we've got a nice reach in terms of people that care about the kind of work that we do. So, but we will do what we can raise the money to. Of course, we've got money budgeted already. We've already got things in place to pay for a lot of this. But I got to get busy. And, and so that's why we're here today to talk to you and say, can we get this lease finalized now so that I can go to those folks? And I think it's important for me to say this, while you tend to kind of see me as the front of all of it. I'm here representing really two boards, both the Church Board and the Joshua's Place Board. We've got about 15 people on staff between those two organizations. Again, hundreds of volunteers and donors and really the thousands of people that I talked about that we're impacting. And so I'm here speaking on their behalf, asking for your support, because I believe we can get all this done. But it's going to start with, can we get the lease renewed and things finalized so that we can move forward? So that's all I had in my notes, but glad to answer any questions now or anytime if you had any.
Anybody with any questions?
No, I think everything looks great.
Okay. Well, you guys know where I live, so if you need me, just stop by, email me, call.
Thank you, Kevin.
I have one question.
Oh, yeah.
Is this, couldn't we, if, if this is so important to get done quickly, which I, and I agree with him, can't we do this under emergency measure instead of a two reading?
I will defer to my attorney and city administrator.
Counsel.
Yeah, that's up to counsel.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, the lease that Andrew Meyer and I looked at was for 2026, if I'm not mistaken. So I don't know if that is emergent necessarily, but as far as any other action that the council wants to take, I would defer to the council on that.
So the, so the one thing is, is I'm going to agree with you. I think that, you know, if you do the readings and you have to wait the appeal time and all that. So the one thing I can say is the new lease would actually start June of '26 and then your old lease would stay in effect till then? Or are you resetting the date?
Yeah, so I think it starts June. And you know, the other option is to have the second reading at the next meeting and then do it as an emergency. And that gives, if Mary Ann wanted to vote on it as well, I mean, just to, it's up to you guys, whatever you want to, either way.
I've seen the programs that they put out.
Yeah, I see the programs that they put out and I've been involved in a few of them. And I'm telling you what, they are really touching lives down there.
So do you want to proceed with it in emergency? Okay. All right, we'll go through our agenda and you can, council can decide at that point. Okay?
I have a question, Mr. Peyton. Is the?
Your mic's not on.
I'm going to have to get used to that. Is the Celebrate Recovery, is that a faith-based recovery?
It follows pretty closely with the kind of principles and structure of AA. Matter of fact, lots of our folks do both, both AA and CR. And so it's a 12-step program, but it's faith-based.
Yeah, there, there's a huge need for that in my practice and, you know, and people throughout Warren County. So I was curious about that.
Yeah, we've got a great relationship with the Warren County Courts. And a lot of times when folks go either through drug courts or have any kind of run-in with law, where there's requirements, there's a requirement then for participation in some kind of, not everyone's going through full rehabilitation, but recovery meetings. And ours counts. They allow us to do that. So it's not uncommon for us on Wednesday nights to be signing a lot of papers and connecting with the folks. But we, we work pretty closely with the guys over at the Warren County Courts.
I was going to say, I could see Judge Peeler has his recovery docket. Judge Teep, Judge Loxley have their respective veterans courts. And although we don't have that here, I suppose our mayor's court could always send a case to Warren County Court, which in turn could.
Yeah, and it's, you know, I think the thing to, appreciate you asking that, Chase, is that, like Joshua's Place, we, we, we really believe in networking and connectivity. And so there's Celebrate Recoveries in several places around Warren County. And we all work together to, when we, typically most Celebrate Recoveries have one nights, that's kind of their designated meeting night. And they'll have other kind of, we call step studies or groups that meet around. But we intentionally keep those on separate nights so that we work, like that's one that just launched in Springboro. We had opening on Sunday night. They've got one over at Tewas Crossing in Mason. We did that on Friday night and really working together. And there's a lot of overlap between people working together and communication. So if somebody comes in, it's not uncommon, we do coins, kind of landmark, people coming in and celebrate 10 and 15-year sobriety, but it's not uncommon, they're coming in, they're getting their one-day coin, like I'm sober today, that, today's the day that I'm here for. And so, so for those in that situation, we've got an entire system in place to where we recognize, kind of link arms with them and then help them get through those first couple of weeks of sobriety, which are the most, most difficult. So having those connections and relationships in other places around the community, make sure we're getting rides to people, those kinds of things is really, really important. And the team that does this, and all of them have been through recovery, it's just an amazing ministry that, that, that happens. And we, we started over next to the Salvation Army in the annex there before, there was even a church here, was the Celebrate Recovery Ministry. Thanks for asking.
Okay, I'm going to open the floor to the public. Did anybody sign up or sign in? We're just checking to see if anybody signed in. Well, you were a guest, so. Okay, so I will open the floor to the public if anybody has anything. Seeing no one. I will now close the floor to the public and we will move on with new business. Emergency Ordinance 2025-13, an ordinance creating a full-time position of a code enforcement officer for the Building and Planning Department. Is there any discussion?
Yes. So the personnel, the personnel committee met on this today and we talked about different aspects of it, you know, how we need to move forward with a lot of different things that's kind of, just kind of been too busy to get to. And I think this is a, a good start and the Personnel Committee did approve this.
Thank you, Linda. So I will need any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, I will need a motion and a second to waive the two-reading rule for Emergency Ordinance 2025-13.
Linda Allen, I'll make a motion to waive the rule.
Brenda Combs, second.
Allen.
Yay.
Carmack.
Yay.
Combs.
Yay.
Better.
Yay.
Spicer.
Yay.
Now I will need a motion to approve by title only Emergency Ordinance 2025-13.
Brenda Combs.
By title only, I'm sorry.
Brenda Combs, motion to approve by title only.
Sharon Carmack, second.
Allen.
Yay.
Carmack.
Yay.
Combs.
Yay.
Better.
Yay.
Spicer.
Yay.
Motion carries. Now moving on to Ordinance 2025-14. This is the ordinance for Joshua's Place. Is there a discussion? Yes.
Go ahead and discuss that, Sharon, what you said earlier in the morning.
I was just asking if we could make this and turn it into an emergency reading, get it approved today?
That is up to council, so.
So I think we can. I think since he has got so much fundraising to do, which is a huge amount of money, and I think we, we could do this if the council is in agreement. I'd like to make this a, amend this to an emergency ordinance. And I'd like to make that motion.
Wait.
To waive the rule.
So I need a motion and a second to amend, first, I believe, the ordinance from, from a regular ordinance to an emergency ordinance.
Motion made to, whatever she said, amend, amend it to an emergency.
Second. Allen.
Yay.
Carmack.
Yay.
Combs.
Yay.
Better.
Yay.
Spicer.
Yay.
Motion carries. So moving on, we, this will read, and Jerry, do you have another number for this now?
I think it.
We'll stay the same.
Chase, I think it just stays the same, I think. We just, we'll amend the, the final copy and have it reprinted.
Okay, so I will need a motion to waive the two-reading rule and a second for the Emergency Ordinance 2025-14, approving a lease agreement with Joshua's Place Incorporated and authorizing the mayor and director of finance to sign the related documents.
Brenda Combs, motion made to approve.
Waive the rule.
To waive the rule, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Sharon Carmack, second.
Allen.
Yay.
Carmack.
Yay.
Combs.
Yay.
Better.
Yay.
Spicer.
Yay.
Now a motion and a second to approve by title only the, and an emergency ordinance approving, approving a lease agreement with Joshua's Place Incorporated.
Linda Allen, I make a motion to approve.
Sharon Carmack, second.
Allen.
Yay.
Carmack.
Yay.
Combs.
Yay.
Better.
Yay.
Spicer.
Yay.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you, council. Emergency Resolution 2025-21, authorizing mayor and director of finance to execute Amendment Three with Choice One Engineering to provide additional construction administration services for the Marrow Road Reconstruction Phase Project, One Project. I need a motion to waive the two-reading rule and a second.
Brenda Combs, motion made to waive the two-reading rule.
Lisa Federer, second.
Allen.
Yay.
Carmack.
Yay.
Combs.
Yay.
Better. Better.
Yay.
Spicer.
Yay.
Was there any discussion or questions about that? I'm sorry, I didn't ask that. I got a little thrown off here. That's okay. Now a motion and a second to approve by title only Emergency Resolution 2025-21, authorizing mayor and director of finance to execute Amendment Three with Choice One Engineering to provide additional construction administration services for the Marrow Road Reconstruction Phase One Project.
I make a motion to approve.
Brenda Combs, second.
Allen.
Yay.
Carmack.
Yay.
Combs.
Yay.
Better.
Yay.
Spicer.
Yay.
A motion to approve. We did that, right? Sorry. Motion carries. Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve the purchase of radar and sensor units for the intersection of Mason, Marrow, Mill Grove and State Route 48 through state contract in the amount of $39,382. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, can you kind of state what this is?
Yeah, yeah, so back in, I guess, 2016 or 17, when we did the Mason, Marrow, Mill Grove, State Route 48 project, part of that was putting the new sensors in the, in the road. The northbound and southbound had the radar units installed. For some reason, the east and west had the, the road, road-mounted sensors. And those, those have failed. Like some wires have been cut somewhere in them. They just deteriorated. So we got quotes, I think, actually a couple of years ago, they had this in the budget. This will put radar units on both, on all four intersections or all four directions, same as what's in, at Cora Nixon and 48. And what this does is it senses the, the traffic backed up. So if it needs a, a left-turn lane, it'll, it'll sense that. So that's kind of, otherwise it's, it's, it's running on the, on the standard programming signal. So that's, it's not getting any signals from the actual traffic. That makes any sense?
It does. I just didn't want anybody to think when they see radar, they think speeding tickets. So I just want you to, I mean, we know what it is because we talked about it, but thank you.
So I will need a motion and a second.
Linda Allen, I make a motion to approve.
Brenda Combs, second.
Allen.
Yay.
Carmack.
Yay.
Combs.
Yay.
Better.
Yay.
Spicer.
Yay.
Motion carries. A motion to approve the invoices are, before that, though, was there any discussion or questions on any of that? Hearing none, a motion and a second is needed.
Brenda Combs, motion to approve.
Sharon Carmack, second.
Allen.
Yay.
Carmack.
Yay.
Combs.
Yay.
Better.
Yay.
Spicer.
Yay.
Motion carries. A motion to approve April financial statements is needed and a second.
Linda Allen, I make a motion to approve.
Sharon Carmack, second.
Allen.
Yay.
Carmack.
Yay.
Combs.
Yay.
Better.
Yay.
Spicer.
Yay.
Motion carries. A motion and a second for approval of meeting minutes of a regular meeting, May 15th, 2025, if there are no corrections or additions.
Brenda Combs, motion to approve.
Lisa Federer, second.
Allen.
Yay.
Carmack.
Yay.
Combs.
Yay.
Better.
Yay.
Spicer.
Yay.
Motion carries. Thank you. There is no old business, so we'll move on to communications and reports. It's been another busy week. We met with Barry Riley this week and we are meeting with Senator Steve Wilson on June 27th. I will be going to the mayor's conference next week in Columbus, the 10th through the 12th. We have our citywide yard sale this weekend, the 6th through the 8th. The sunflower field is getting ready to be planted. This year, we moved it to Oders Park because we have the new South Lebanon River Dogs down there and everything. And we just thought we'd put it along Main Street so everybody could see it. Our next council meeting is June the 7th, Tuesday, June the 17th due to the holiday, June, June 10th, on June 19th. Potholes are being repaired all over South Lebanon, so please be patient with us because there are a lot. So if anyone is missed, please reach out to us and let us know. I can't think of any, we've had a lot of meetings. King Avenue has finished the repaving. I went down there and it looks great. I've been down to see the River Dogs and had a great day yesterday. So, and if you are interested in kayaking or canoeing, go check them out. We've been working on our, we're working on our website. We will be working on our website. We are having meetings and consultations about that. We will be working on our website. We are having meetings and consultations about that. I think that's it for me. Tina, our director of finance.
Thank you, Mayor Burke. It's that time of year to start thinking about the 2026 budget. I feel like we just wrapped up 2025. But the goal this year, assuming we keep full staff members, we will get this budget passed in the year of 25 to start the year off instead of pushing it out to March of next year. With that said, the tax budget will be the first thing that we tackle. That's due to be approved by July 15. So that'll be brought to you probably that first meeting of July. I will be asking the finance committee to meet sometime here the last week or so of June, so we can go over that. The tax budget really focuses on just our revenue side, looking at what we anticipate to take in for revenue of next year. And then from there, we will then, after that's finalized, then we can start the budget process of what are we going to spend. And I'll be asking the different committees to meet, the Parks and Recs Committee to meet and talk about the needs for the Parks Department, just so that we can continue to gather that information for our long-term capital plan. We're trying to continue to add to things and just get ourselves thinking ahead of time instead of being reactive to our needs, that we try to plan better and be proactive with our capital projects. I just wanted to get you guys, let you guys know that that's kind of coming up. That's it.
Thank you. Jerry, our city administrator.
Just to follow up on what Tina was talking about was capital projects. So our, the Ohio Public Works Commission grant applications are due beginning of September. We're starting looking at what's on our list for future years and try to maybe look and kind of marry some of those and see if we can get a good competitive project and get score, score high enough to get funded on the OPWC. So we'll see. We'll, probably the next meeting, we'll have maybe a, kind of a start with a list of different projects that might, might work. Tuesday, the bids for the street paving program were open, so we're evaluating those. At the next meeting, we'll have, should have an award recommendation. And they came in quite a bit lower than the estimate, which is good. So we'll see what we can, what we can do. The potential low bidder was the same contractor as the Morrow Road project, so those all could be done kind of in, if that happens, kind of concurrently, so. And then, the Arbers at Grandin Pond, the Phase Two, they're under construction right now. Obviously, the, as everybody else, the rain has been holding things up. They also submitted their Phase Three plans, which are the plans along Grandin, the entrance from Grandin Road. So those will be going to the planning commission soon as well. And we're trying to wrap up all the 4th of July festivities. We've got the, should have the band and DJ and start getting some vendors, so. So we're getting the process in place, so. That's all I got.
I'd like to introduce our new law director. Chase Kirby.
Yeah. First off, I am excited to be here. So my inaugural meeting, looking forward to this. So thank you all. The only thing I have to report is I reviewed the lease agreement for Joshua's Place and what the passage of the ordinance tonight. We're in a position that we can go ahead and sign that. Otherwise, no, nothing else to report from my perspective. So if anybody needs my contact info, email, cell number, I can give that to whomever.
We all need it.
You got it. Yeah. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. I forgot, just because Harry isn't here, he did submit a report and I think you all got it. If there are any questions or anything on it, reach out to him. Oh, okay. You answered all of them?
Yeah.
Okay. Sergeant Adams. Good evening.
Just a couple of things. So we had our meeting earlier about events and touching up again, and as a reminder, August 5, 2025, from this year, from 6:00 to 8:30. At Veterans Memorial Park here across the street at 15 North High Street will be the National Night Out. Couple of things to look forward to on that is we will have a K-9 demonstration going on. Additionally, we will have a drone demonstration as well as the Tactical Response Unit or Team, which is otherwise known as a SWAT team. Look forward to police vehicles, fire vehicles, EMS vehicles will be there. Community organizations should be, will be present and our local 911 and emergency management will be there as well. There'll be some other things as we're getting through, but I thought I'd give everybody just a little bit of a taste of what to expect that night. Invite all the community to come out that evening. I would love to see everyone down at the park. The next thing I have is building off the radar comment. So we have, again this year, increased our patrols for various complaints on speeds and stop sign violations. That just went into effect here a couple of weeks ago at the end of, towards the end of May. So just warning to, or I guess a word of warning is please, 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 when you're driving our streets, make sure you're following the speed limits. There are kids out there playing, there are people that cross the street, stop sign violations, please make sure you're stopping. We're, we're here to protect the community and prevent anybody from being needlessly injured or hurt. Okay, so keep that in mind. We will have extra patrols, extra deputies out there taking enforcement actions. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Does anyone have anything for me? Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And you said that was the fifth or the second?
National Night Out. It's, I'm sorry, it's gonna be August 5.
Okay.
It's a Tuesday night.
Okay. Council members. Council member Spicer.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Council member Federer.
Just a couple of things. It's already been touched on with the events committee. Fourth of July starts at 6. We have a band, we have a stage, we have a tent, we have a, a kids' corner going. We have a lot of stuff gonna be there this year. August 2nd is the movie night at the park. And Mufasa will be playing. I can't wait. I haven't seen it. August 5th is National Night Out. So that's our three big events this summer.
Okay, thank you. Council member Carmack.
I guess I kind of got a question. Is, is that big blue box down there by the river gonna stay there all summer? Or is that just for equipment unload at this time of the year?
I think that was for the River Dogs, yeah. Yeah, they're using that. I'll, I'll have to look into it and see what, update.
I was just down there and I don't remember seeing a big blue box.
That's container.
Okay, we'll check into that. Council member Allen.
I guess I have a question. So you mentioned, which I didn't think about it, that we're moving the meeting from Thursday to Tuesday, right, on the 19th?
Yes.
We've always had to get that approved through council. Do we need to do that?
We already did, I think, early in the year, yeah.
Yeah.
And also on the first week of July.
Okay. I can't remember, but thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, council member Combs.
Thank you. So with the budget, can we add another officer this year?
That's something that we'll have to look at.
Okay.
That's why the budget's
On our wish list.
There's, yes, put that on your wish list.
And you know, maybe not use the traffic officer and put on a full-time officer. I think would maybe help him more so than pan the traffic officer. I don't know, he would have to
Go through the county. Both need to address that.
Well, I know we came up with the traffic detail last year as a solution, a temporary solution to kind of bridge that gap for the need of an additional officer. With that said, that's about 20 grand that we're spending for traffic detail versus probably another 150 plus a vehicle for the sheriff's department. So it was kind of a, a budget-friendly option at this time. I do know that is, you know, Sergeant Adams has requested additional personnel and it is something to be considered along with all of the other personnel requests, along with all the other budget needs, the street programs and things like that. So it kind of has to all come together and then we have to make hard decisions on which area do we, we put our funding.
Well, the more rooftops that open. He's only got five. He will, or well, no, five underneath him, counting him would be six, correct? And he needs probably about eight altogether, can, you know, with him in, but we can talk about that later.
Right, we can talk about that. I mean, just so you know, right now, the safety services is about a million dollars of our budget and we take in about 2.2 in revenue from the tax revenue. So, you know, we're talking about a, a pretty large percentage. Not saying the need's not there, I'm just giving you the numbers. So it is something to, that we need to talk about.
Yes, it's giving us the hard facts, the reality of what our budget is and what we can do because there's a lot to do. Okay.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm not done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I want to thank Warren County Sheriff's Department for keeping us all safe. And then Union Township. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you all, and I need a motion and a second to adjourn.
Yeah, one thing, I forgot about the new tractor we've got. Got delivered on Monday, yes.
So yeah, that's the new John Deere. It's got push hog attachments on the front loader. I think there's something else too, what else we got? It's supposed to take a lot of the bobcat attachments with it, so it's gonna be pretty useful.
That's what I was just thinking. Okay, so I, I will need a motion and a second to adjourn if there are no other questions or concerns.
Motion made to adjourn.
Lisa, second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none.